Welcome to 2021's first school board meeting. Please stand with me and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to hear everybody in sync. On the Internet, I hear all the echoes. Ms. Langford, can you take roll call, please?
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Dethel.
Here.
Mr. Seacord.
Here.
Mr. Dethel.
Here.
Mr. Gilchrist.
Here.
Okay, so this is our organizational meeting. So the first item on the agenda is to nomination, nomination for the president for 2021. The chairperson will call for nominations for the election of president of the Northwest Board of Education for the year of 2021.
Nominate Mark.
I'd like, I'd like to nominate Mark.
A second.
Chris, I don't have the, oh, you're gonna fill in, sorry. Are there any other nominations? Hit sync. Yes. Then we go to the next item.
Oh, we don't get the vote on it yet?
I don't, I don't have the ability to call for the vote.
Oh.
Yeah, next item. Um, she's gonna, she's gonna fill out the blanks.
Okay.
So voting now begins for, mark over for president of the Board of Education for 2021. The first candidate to receive the majority of the votes wins. So I need a motion and a second.
Second.
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Everybody?
We've been waiting on Joe.
I'm not getting it, I'm not get, can I give you a verbal?
It won't let us.
It's not coming up.
Does Johnny get synced?
Yeah.
Did you hit the sync button, Joe? The blue sync button in the top left corner of the, the blue bar, light blue bar next to our names?
I don't see it. Matt, are you still with me?
Joe, like right here.
Daryl, can you reach over and show?
If you don't see the sync, you may be able to hit join meeting again. That should also sync you.
Joe, were you able to hear Ms. Langford? If you hit, join meeting.
Just barely, I can hardly hear any of you guys, just barely.
Okay, if you'll hit, Joe, join meeting again in the right-hand column, it should sync you.
All right, we're here.
There it is. That passes five to zero.
Need to hit join meeting again, Joe, and it'll resync.
All right.
Yes, I've got it there.
I'm not getting it. I did vote.
Yeah, we got that.
Okay, so go into the dropdown and select official oath, and then hit sync.
Should be that page?
Joe, in the dropdown, go to the official oath, 3.3.
3.4.
I'm sorry, 3.4.
All right.
And then hit sync, and that should take you to the current page. We all had to do that as well.
Okay, where's, where's, where's the sync?
On the top left.
Okay.
I don't think you have to.
I'm not getting it.
It says a board item is not approved for viewing because it has not been signed by a superintendent.
Yeah, Matt, you have to do the dropdown and select 3.3 or 3.4, whichever one it is.
3.3 is the official oath.
Right. Right, 3.3, and it should take you right to where we need to be.
Okay. And it says unsynced number five. Do I hit sync?
That's what we have.
Yeah.
And then we get, it jumps back to pledge of, pledge of allegiance, and under that it says board item parentheses, is not approved for viewing because it's not been signed by a superintendent.
I just left it there on saying.
I need to advance?
I'm on 3.3 official oath, president of the board.
See minus 3.4 official oath.
My, my 3.4.
I've elected president twice.
My 3.4 is vice president, is vice president.
All right, we're at 3.3.
Okay. Everybody at 3.3, or at least the oath?
I'm at 3.4 official oath. I have, I have 3.3 listed twice. I'm sorry, 3.2 election of president, an election of president.
Can you sync, hit sync again? Go previous to 3.2? Okay. And then hit sync.
Okay, 3.3 official oath, yeah. That's why they're listed twice.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is everybody at 3.3?
Yep.
That's wrong.
Is Joe at 3.3?
Joe, are you at 3.3?
Correct.
Thanks, sir.
Is it showing sync?
No, mine doesn't say sync.
It's an interesting button.
If I do, it takes me back to, I won't know.
Okay.
Okay. Does it get you back to the place?
You might be able to see it on your screen too, in case you can't hear me.
Yeah, that's nice.
I, Mark Gilbert.
I, Mark Gilbert.
Do hereby affirm.
Do hereby affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will perform faithfully.
That I will perform faithfully.
The duties of president.
The duties of president.
Of the Board of Education of Northwest Local School District in Hamilton County, Ohio.
Duties of the president, Board of Education for the Northwest Local School District, Hamilton County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And accordance.
And accordance.
With the laws.
With the laws.
Now in effect.
Now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted.
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance.
During my continuance.
In said office.
In said office.
And until my successor.
And until my successor.
Is elected and qualified.
Is elected and qualified.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, sir. Okay, next is nomination for vice presidency. President will call for nominations for the election of the vice president of the Northwest Board of Education for the year of 2021.
I'd like to nominate Jim Dethel for vice president.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? Is that 3.5? Or back to 3.4?
3.4.
We're still on 3.4, though.
Okay, no, we should be there now.
Joe, are you on 3.5 election of vice president for 2021?
Okay, hold on.
So I got listed twice, so I need to hit sync.
Yeah, election for, yeah, 3.5.
Okay, great. Okay, so Jim Dethel for vice president for 2021. Voting now begins for Jim Dethel for vice president of the board for 2021. Is there a motion and a second? I make motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, call for votes. That passes five to zero.
Jim, it's also on your screen in case you can't hear me.
That didn't help me either, though.
Sorry. I say your name.
I, Jim Dethel.
Do hereby affirm.
Do hereby affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will perform faithfully.
That I will perform faithfully.
The duties of vice president.
The duties of vice president.
Of the Board of Education.
And the Board of Education.
Northwest Local School District.
Northwest Local School District, Hamilton County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And accordance with the laws.
And accordance with the laws.
Now in effect.
Now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted.
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance and said office.
And hereby my continuance and said office.
And until my successor.
Until my successor.
Is elected and qualified.
Is elected and qualified.
Congratulations.
Good, good, congrats. Okay, so we just did the oath. That takes us to 3.8, establishing time and place of board meetings. Regular meetings of the Board of Education for the calendar year 2021 will be held on the dates and times and locations designated as the attached agenda item. These are also on the website for viewing for.
As soon as they're approved, they will be.
As soon as they're approved.
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion and a second, please?
Some move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I know we put in here, we tried to do one more meeting at Butler Tuck, and we always seem to pick October, but October's already the all-boards meeting, so I just wondered, I mean, not that anything has to be decided now, but maybe it'd be a good idea to just do it some other time.
Get it on the radar now?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
I think we probably have more people that would attend the all-boards meeting.
Sure.
And this if we weren't doing it in time.
We can sync that with that calendar, or so everybody's on board with that?
Yeah, we can make changes as we go, find out if the all-boards meeting will happen. Hopefully, we will be, I started next year.
At this point, we don't know.
Yeah.
If that's gonna.
It could be virtual again.
Yep.
But if it's not, we could still go up and do the campus.
Sure. And that passes five to zero as well, thank you. Student Achievement Liaison, so the Board of Education nominates and appoints whoever would be nominated to represent the Student Achievement Liaison for the Board of 2021.
I nominate Pam Dethel.
Second.
Pam, I think that's okay?
Oh, yes. I'm hoping someday we'll be able to have kids back at our.
Great, that passes five to zero, thank you. Legislative Liaison, we need to make a nomination for a Legislative Liaison.
I nominate Matt.
Second. Matt, do you want to do it?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, that passes five to zero, thank you. Matt? Recognition of Board Attorneys. The Board recognizes the following Board of Attorneys: Densmore for Works Compensation, Financing and Construction; Finney Law for the Board Revisions and Expulsions; Ennis and Britton for General Expulsions and Construction. President recommends the Board of Education approve the Board Attorneys as listed above.
Some move.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Passes five to zero. The OSBA Membership Dues for 2021, amount of $7,683. This is for the membership dues for the OSBA. The President recommends the Board of Education approve the membership dues for the OSBA as listed.
Some move.
Second.
Passes five to zero. OSBA Legal Assistance Fund Membership, whereas the Northwest Board of Education wishes to support the efforts of other Boards of Education to obtain favorable judicial decisions, and whereas the Ohio School Board Association Legal Assistance Fund has been established for this purpose, therefore, the Board hereby resolves to participate in the OSBA LAF for calendar year 2021 and authorizes our treasurer to pay the $250. The Board, President recommends approval of membership to the OSBA Legal Assistance Fund as listed.
Some move.
That passes five to zero. Establishment of the Board Service Fund for 2021. Per the Ohio Revised Code, the Board of Education may, by resolution, set aside each year from the general fund a sum not to exceed $2 for each child enrolled in our district, or $20,000, whichever is greater. The President recommends the Board of Education approve the Board Service Fund as listed above. Some move.
Second.
That passes five to zero. Next item, Authorization of Official Signatures. The Board of Education authorizes the President and the Treasurer to be the official signers for payment of funds for the Board of Education, and further authorizes that one of the two sign checks on all Board of Education accounts, and that the President's signature and the Treasurer's signature may be a facsimile. President recommends that the Board of Education approve the authorization of the official signatures as listed above.
Some move.
Second. There's a motion and a second. That passes five to zero. Authorization of Treasurer to Pay Bills. Amy's item. The Board of Education authorizes the Treasurer to pay bills as they are presented within the availability of funds, report all bills paid monthly to the Board of Education, and to include bills not paid due to unavailability of funds. President recommends the Board of Education authorize the Treasurer to pay bills as listed.
Some move. Second.
Amy, pay the bills. Next is Investment of Inactive and Interim Funds and Commercial Paper. The Board of Education authorizes the Treasurer to invest inactive and interim funds at the most productive interest rate and according to board policy whenever the inactive and interim funds are available. The Board of Education authorizes the Treasurer to invest up to a maximum of 40% of the district's interim funds in either of the following: commercial paper notes issued by a for-profit corporation, business trust or association, real estate investment trust, common law trust, unincorporated business, or general or limited partnership which has assets exceeding of $500 million. The President recommends that the Board of Education authorize the Treasurer to invest inactive and interim funds and commercial paper as listed.
Some move.
Second. I jumped ahead, sorry. Okay, that passed five to zero. Next, Designee for Public Records Training. Per the Ohio Revised Code, a member of the Board of Education or designee must receive three hours of public records training for each term of office. The Board of Education designates Elizabeth Witt for the training on behalf of the Northwest Local School Board of Education for the current interim, current term of office. The President recommends, at the prerogative of the Board of Education, to designate Elizabeth Witt for public records training for the current term of office on behalf of the Northwest Local School Board of Education.
Some move.
Second. There's a motion and a second. That passes five to zero. Tax Incentive Review Council Designee. Tax Incentive Review Council Designee for Hamilton County, Greentownship, and Colrain Township. Per the Ohio Revised Code, the Board of Education must designate a representative to serve on the Tax Incentive Review Councils for Hamilton County, Greentownship, and Colrain Township. The Board of Education designates Amy Wells and/or Elizabeth Witt. The President recommends, at the prerogative of the Board of Education, to designate Amy Wells and/or Elizabeth Witt for the Tax Incentive Review Councils for Hamilton County, Greentownship, and Colrain Township on behalf of the Northwest Local School Board of Education.
Some move.
Second. Motion and a second. That passes five to zero. Employment of Temporary Personnel. The Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent to employ such temporary personnel as needed. Such employments are to be presented for approval by the Board of Education at the next regular meeting. We need a motion and a second.
Some move.
Second. There's a motion and a second. That passes five to zero. Acceptance of employment, employment resignation. The Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent to accept the resignation of personnel as needed. Such resignations are to be presented for approval by the Board of Education at the next regular meeting. We would like a motion and a second, please.
Some move.
Second. There's a motion and a second. That passes five to zero. Approved Student Activity Accounts. The Board of Education authorizes student activity accounts to be active for the fiscal year of 2021 and 2022. The President recommends the Board of Education approve the student activity accounts as listed.
Some move.
Second. Passes five to zero. Appoint a Fiscal Officer for Student Activity Accounts. The Board of Education appoints the Superintendent to be the sign-off, sign-off officer of all student activity programs, and he shall present these programs to the Board of Education once each year. He will also have the authority to approve and/or modify the student activity budgets throughout the year. The President recommends that the Board of Education appoint the Superintendent as the Fiscal Officer for Student Activity Accounts as listed.
Some move. Second.
Motion and a second. It's all yours, Todd. Approved Board Member Benefits. Pursuant to House Bill 369 dated October 17, 1985, and Resolution 40 through 85 dated December 9, 1985, the current Board members may exercise their option to participate in the district's employee benefit plans at the Board member's expense. The rates are shown, and the President recommends that the Board of Education approve the Board members' benefits as listed.
Some move.
Second.
The rates are shown, and the President recommends that the Board of Education approve the Board members' benefits and accounts.
That passes five to zero. So just for clarification, Todd and Amy, the amounts that were, are posted on here are not better than any other employee, they're in alignment with what any employee would pay.
They're actually more. This is the.
Oh, it's more, okay.
This is the full premium.
Okay.
Our employees have a percentage, and the Board pays the other, you know, so there's a split.
Right.
For our employees where this is the full premium.
Full premium.
So Board members pay 100%.
Great, I just want the community to understand that that's not, yeah. Thank you. Records Retention. The attached records are being presented for recognition and will be submitted for approval to destroy through the Historical Society. The president recommends that the Board of Education recognize the following records as listed. Second. Motion and a second. That passes five to zero. Resolution of blanket certification. The treasurer may issue blanket purchase orders, certificates, for the sum not exceeding $25,000 established by the resolution for the board against any specific line item account over a period of time not to extend beyond the end of the fiscal year in which it is issued. Only one blanket purchase order or certificate may be outstanding at any one particular time for any one particular line item appropriation. The treasurer recommends the Board of Education, sorry, doing your job.
That's right. I'm recommending that the Board of Education approve this resolution so that we can issue blanket certification or blanket purchase.
Second.
Second. I was on a roll, Amy. I wasn't stopping. That passes five to zero.
And next, I would like to ask the board to approve the annual fund-to-fund transfers for the general fund for the following athletic funds for transportation. Due to the pandemic, we did do half of this annual transfer earlier in the year. Normally, we do the whole amount at this meeting, but we did some earlier because of admissions being lower and the funds needing more support. So this is just doing the final half of the annual transfer. We usually do a $60,000 annual transfer, so the $30,000 almost half to each of the high schools and the other half, $500 to each of the middle schools for, to help offset their transportation costs. With that, I would like to recommend the Board of Education approve the second half of our annual fund-to-fund transfer as listed.
Second. That passes five to zero.
And finally, it's required that the Board of Education accept all of our rebates that we've received throughout the year. And so our PNC purchasing card, we're able to pay our bills using a credit card and be able to get rebates back, so that helps us to have more resources for other things. It's a little over $11,000. Our FIS Integrated Payables rebate is 90, almost 9,800, and this is a software and a system that helps us to watch for fraud. So not only do we have fraud protection to help with that, but also we get rebates back on that. So it's kind of a double positive. EPC rebate, it's a purchasing consortium, so the purchasing consortium bids out contracts and catalogs, so we get a re, we get discounts on our purchasing when we purchase, and we also get a rebate back at the end of the year for multi-stating. So that was a little over $16,000. And our credit rewards, while we do not use the points at this time because it won't grow fuel, we do benefit by getting reductions when we go to purchase items from customers. So with that, I recommend that the board accept the rebates and rewards as listed.
Second. That motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Appointment, oh, this is yours, Todd.
Yep.
Sorry.
The next action is appointment of a purchasing agent. The Board of Education authorizes the Director of Business Operations as the superintendent's designee to serve as the purchasing agent for the school district. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the appointment of the purchasing agent as listed.
Second. That passes five to zero.
The next is an organizational item also. It is recognition of booster slash support organizations. The board recognizes the following booster support organizations as attached. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education recognize the booster support organizations as listed.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
Just a quick comment. Couldn't do it without you, so everybody worked so hard with all the boost organizations. Thank you so much.
No kidding. That passes five to zero. And that concludes our first meeting. The board president asks for a motion and a second for adjournment of this meeting. Second. And a motion and a second. The organizational meeting is adjourned. Meeting will be the tax. Tax budget, I'm sorry. We'd like to take roll for this meeting. Chris, can you, do a roll, please?
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Dassel.
Here.
Ms. Dassel, still in, in for you tomorrow.
Here.
Here.
Okay, so first item is resolution to approve the tax budget. Anywho else?
Hey, good evening. So annually, the Ohio Revised Code requires all taxing districts to prepare a tax budget every year, but since the school district's on a fiscal year and not on a calendar year as our other municipalities in the county is, we have a modified tax budget approved by the county, and then we complete it, and we only complete it for the funds that we receive tax dollars. So our general fund, our permanent improvement, and our debt funds. We don't have to do one for every single one of our funds. We have that approved at, by the whole appropriation resolutions and budgets in June for July, in July. So the tax budget shows the amount that we expect to receive and spend in the general fund, our permanent improvement funds, and both of our debt service funds, which is our Monford Heights bonds and our master facility project bonds. This way, the county can determine by looking at two years and two fiscal years how much they need to ask for in millage. So if that, they look at valuation, they determine the millage so that we can make sure we pay our principal and interest payments for our debt bonds. Then we have the two inside mills that were moved to permanent improvement, so they're able to collect the two inside mills moved to our, to send to us for our permanent improvement fund, and then our general fund, which is based on valuation, what inside millage receives, and then also any of our tax levies that have been passed. So in December, we prepare the budget. We post it out for our community, and we also put it in the newspaper to let people know where they can view it. And then tonight, we're having our hearing, and we've asked for public comments on the budget itself before we approve it and file it with the county. We have not received any feedback, comments, concerns, questions, anything regarding the tax budget. So unless, as far as this hearing, unless you have any questions, comments, concerns, we can move on to 2.0 for the resolution.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
I do want to point out that the operating expenses for the general fund are $98.6 million. For our debt service fund, it's 5.7 million, and for our permanent improvement, it's $3 million.
That motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Amy. Okay, that concludes our tax budget meeting. We will adjourn this meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second. Great. That passes five to zero. This is our second meeting. We'll start the general board meeting at 6:30 sharp. Welcome to our very first 2021 Board of Education meeting. Please join me with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. And Ms. Langford, can you take roll call again, please? Here.
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 All right, at this time, we would like to turn it over to Lindsay Creasy to do a presentation on OSBA School Board Recognition Month. So January is School Board Appreciation Month, and we'd like to recognize our Board of Education. So Lindsay, it's all yours.
Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure to join you all virtually tonight.
Hi, Lindsay.
So, hi. So during the month of January each year, we take the time to celebrate our hard-working school board members and to educate the public about the important role that our Board of Education plays in our communities and in our schools. Although showing appreciation is, I believe, a year-round process in our district, we like to take advantage of the designated School Board Recognition Month in order to ensure that these very important people receive the thanks that they deserve. Mark Gilbert, Jim Detzel, Joe Yoshimura, Pam Detzel, and Matt Tietzort. Over the year, much has been done and much has been accomplished, so it's with much appreciation that we say thank you. Before I go further into this presentation, I'd like to pause for a minute to play a short message from our NWLSD staff and our students. I'm going to share my screen, so Matt, I'm going to share it, and if you can't hear my video, just send me a chat message.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Hello, I want to thank the Board of Education for everything you do to support us in the classroom at Houston.
Thank you for continuing to show up and make our schools and community a better place.
Sign.
Thank you.
We really appreciate everything. Oh, there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
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 And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
That's awesome.
I hope you all enjoyed that.
That was awesome.
Very nice effort. I will say that we received so many messages and so many videos from our staff and our students that we actually weren't able to include all of them in tonight's presentation just because of time. However, we will share the videos throughout the rest of the month of January so that we can give you all your roses. I want to take a few minutes to introduce our board members to the community. As I call your name, I ask that you stand as I read your bio. In an effort to adhere to safety protocols, we've placed each of your certificates on your desk along with a goodie bag and a handwritten card from the NWLSD administrative staff. And before I get into that, I will say that there is a treat in that bag. It's a mug that was actually handmade by Heidi Stickey. It's really, really nice. So kudos to you, Heidi. All right, first we'll have Mark Gilbert. Please stand. Mark was elected to the Board of Education in November of 2017. Mark is a lifelong Corrine Township community member. He's been employed in the medical field for 30 years, where he now works as the regional manager for Steel Valley Radiology. He's a graduate of Mount Halsey High School and earned his radiology degree at the University of Cincinnati. Mark has been married to his wife, Tia, for 28 years, and they have two children. Tia is employed at the Christ Hospital as an RN in the Surgical Services Department. Their son, Brandon, 22, is a Corrine class graduate of 2015. Brandon earned his master's degree in 2019 and is now enrolled in seminary school at West Seminary in Portland, Oregon. Hannah, who's 14, currently attends Corrine High School as a sophomore. She participates on the varsity golf team and is an active student in Student Senate and Honor Society. Mark is proud of their community engagement and mission work and they participate, that they participate in around the world. The Gilberts attend White Oak Christian Church, where they participate in many functions within the church as well as participate in missions around the world. Mark is proud of the impact Northwest Local School District has had and is having on his children. He firmly believes it takes a village to provide the most for our children. It is his desire to repay that impact in his role as a board member, his desire to improve the community awareness of the inner workings of the district. Mark is also passionate about connecting the district to the supporting townships to strengthen the community as a whole. Thank you so much, Mark. Next, we'll have Matt Tietzort stand. Matt Tietzort is the newest member of our board. Matt is a lifelong resident of Corrine Township and attended Northwest Schools. Mr. Tietzort has been married to his wife, Angie, for 26 years. They have four sons together. Alex, who's a Corrine graduate of class of 2012. Noah, who's a Corrine graduate of class of 2015. Sam, who's a graduate from Corrine of the class of 2018. And Daniel, who's a Corrine graduate from the class of 2023. Matt has been a Boy Scout leader for 20 years and is currently the Assistant Scoutmaster for Troop 644. Matt is also a trustee of the Corrine Historical Society. He enjoys football, Reds baseball, traveling with his family, attending musical concerts, and monster trucks with his sons. Thank you so much, Matt. Next, we'll have Pam Detzel. Please stand. Pam Detzel has been a member of the Northwest Local School Board since 1998. She's been married to her husband, Jim Detzel, for 37 years, and both are graduates of Northwest High School. They have three grown daughters, Ashley, Brittany, and Lindsay. The three girls are Corrine High School graduates. They also have three grandsons. Gavin and Coop are future Monford Heights musketeers. They are also very excited to welcome a granddaughter in May. Pam is the co-owner of Detzel Insurance Agency. She enjoys spending time with her family, the theater, music, traveling, fantasy football, and being actively involved in the Northwest Local School District. When asked about NWLSD, Pam's response was, "I want to thank our entire community for the overwhelming support that they showed on Election Day on November of 2019. We are going to continue to work hard in and out of the classroom each and every day. Our dedicated staff work hard each and every day to provide a quality education." to provide a quality education for all students. We have students that excel both in and out of the classroom." Pam urges community members to get involved and to volunteer, stating, "You can make a difference in the life of a child. Call one of our schools today and see how you can help." Thank you, Pam. Next, we'll have Joe Yoshimura. Please stand up.
Okay.
"It's a pleasure working on the Northwest Local School Board of Education," says Joe. Joe's originally from Chicago, Illinois. After graduating from Saint Ignatius College Prep High School, he attended Xavier University, where he received his BA in Political Science and his MA in History. He is married to Martha, his sounding board, and they have three wonderful children. Eric, who has ABS in Biology from the University of Cincinnati; Amy, who has a Bachelor of Arts in Business from Ohio State University; and Sarah, who has a Bachelor of Science in Biology from the University of Dayton and a Master of Science from John Carroll University. He also has six grandchildren that he's instilled the importance of education to. Joe has taught in the Cincinnati Public School District for 35-plus years. He taught at Walnut High School in his last 27 years. In 1998, he was given the coveted Golden Apple Award for Excellence in Teaching. In 2019, he was awarded the Most Prestigious, the University of Cincinnati USA Educator of the Year. He's a member of the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers and served on the Union Executive Council. He also served on the Diversity Council for OHSAA in Columbus, Ohio. He umpired men's softball and was an official for varsity basketball for 27 years and became the first Asian to officiate a state final in the state of Ohio. On March 23, 2019, Joe was awarded the OHSBCA Hall of Honor Award. This award is given to individuals who have provided exemplary service to Ohio high school basketball, and he was voted by the high school basketball coaches of the District 16. Thank you so much, Joe. Next, we'll have Jim Detsel. Please stand, please. Sorry, I saw on your thing Butler texted out, so I said Butler even though I was supposed to say your name. Okay, here we go. Jim Detsel was re-elected in November of 2019 for his fourth term on the school board. He continues to serve as the Butler Tech Board Representative for the Northwest Local School District. He serves on the Board Development and Effectiveness Committee and the Legislative Committee at Butler Tech. He thoroughly enjoys his work on both boards, and one of his goals is to increase the number of students from our district to enroll in the Butler Tech program. Butler Tech continues to expand their facilities, including new construction, beginning the summer of 2021 at the Natural Science Center. The opportunities for students are endless. We have so many partnerships, including Westchester Hospital, giving students a jump start on their careers while they are still in high school. Jim continues his work for the Community Partners for Education as the treasurer and is still very active in the community's support of recent levies. He continues to serve on additional district committees, including the Building and Negotiation Committees. Mr. Detsel is the recipient of the Warren Stevens Award. This is awarded by the Ohio School Boards Association for Outstanding Board Member from the neighboring district. Jim Detsel has been the owner of Detsel Insurance Agency since 1979. He's married to his wife, Pam, and they have three daughters, Ashley, Brittany, and Lindsay. They also have three grandsons, Jacob, Gavin, and Cooper, and welcomed their first granddaughter, Kemper, Joe, in May. Jim is a graduate of Northwest High School, class of 1978. He volunteered as a coach for 13 years at Corrine High School, coaching track and cross-country. He enjoys the time spending getting to know all the district kids, and he enjoys watching all sports and is a huge Florida Gator fan. Thank you so much, Jim. I now ask that all of you stand up and please hold your certificate in hand. Mark Gilbert, Jim Detsel, Joe Yoshimura, Pam Detsel, and Matt T. Sort. In sincere appreciation for your exemplary leadership and service to the public, we now present you with your certificate. Thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Of course, I have just a little bit more. So every year, we honor the board. In past years, we've purchased books to be added in the libraries within our schools. However, in light of public health concerns surrounding COVID-19, we've decided to move a different direction this year. As we put our heads together to think of the best way to honor our board, one idea especially floated to the top, honoring the leadership of our district. As many of you all know, we rolled out our strategic plan last year. That plan is and will be the foundation of how we move forward in the future. Within it, we unveiled our new mission, vision, and belief statements and identified our five key goal areas: student achievement, social-emotional development, diversity and equity, financial stability, and cultural trust. True leadership starts at the top and trickles down throughout an organization. The work that has been put in by our board to implement the first year of our strategic plan has been tremendous. In an effort to honor their work, we'll be hanging our mission and vision statement on our boardroom wall to continue to remind us to keep our focus as we move forward. The sign at this time has not been completed. However, a draft of the 45 by 30 has been. We are, of course, open to listening to your feedback and suggestions at a later time. And at this time, I will show you a draft of the mission and vision statement that will hang right over the heads on the side where the administrators sit. I'm going to share my screen. I'm going to read it out loud. As you can see, the logo is at the top, but it's our mission statement that says, "The Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success." Our vision: Teaching and learning in the Northwest local schools will provide learning experiences that empower students to contribute to a future not yet imagined; inspire learners to adapt, be resilient, collaborate, and problem solve; create a supportive, social-emotional culture, and will provide a foundation to cultivate healthy relationships. I hope that you all have enjoyed the presentation, and we will be in touch very soon to let you know when the project for the wall will be complete.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thanks, Lindsay. That was awesome.
Okay, next on our board agenda is legislative update. Do we have any legislative updates?
Yeah, we have a few things. So we have a handful of bills that are awaiting Duane's signature, one of which he signed today. We have House Bill 409, which provides flexibility for educational requirements of substitute teachers and changes in education law to provide flexibility and relief during the pandemic. House Bill 36 is pending its signature, which would require districts to administer annual dyslexia screening in grades K through 5. It also requires various professional development. Senate Bill 259, which requires installation of water bottle filling stations and drinking fountains in new school buildings that are constructed with assistance from the OFCC. And Senate Bill 331, which sunsets the Academic Standards Review Committees in English, Math, Social Studies, and Science, among other committees and councils. And then House Bill 231, which he signed today, which requires the Ohio Department of Education to compile and publicize a list of entities that provide free and reduced-price epinephrine auto-injectors and permit school districts to create training for staff and instruction for students on food allergies and allergic reaction treatments. It also permits schools and camps to procure and use injectable or nasally administered Glupagon in accordance with prescribed policies and exempts them from licensing requirements related to the possession of Glupagon. That's all I have. Todd, do you have anything else?
No, the House Bill 409 will be very helpful. We go through a COG to get our subs, so we'll be working with Hamilton County Educational Service Center to see what more subs we can get in our buildings, especially as the cases tend to rise for COVID. So that's a very important piece that we need the governor to move on and get in place. Right now, it requires a four-year degree to be a sub, so this would lessen those requirements so we could get more adults in the building. So obviously, they would have to follow a lot of background checks and other things to be in the building. But again, we go through a COG for our subs, so it's hoping to make that pool larger so that we can actually get subs in our buildings when we need them. So we'll be able to keep more students in person.
In person and schools open.
That's been one of our biggest struggles, is staffing. Yeah, not many subs at all. A lot of people not wanting to be subs because of COVID, but now this will open it up to those who maybe could help us and be more instrumental in actually providing lessons for our kids when our teachers are out.
That's all I have, Mark.
Thank you, sir. That takes us to Student Achievement Liaison Report.
Okay. I have a list of athletes here we want to recognize, and I'm going to apologize ahead of time if I mispronounce your name. We're going to start out with the Cincinnati Enquirer Fall All-Stars, All-City Recognition. Corrine High School Football, First Team, Dante Corleone, Defensive Player of the Year, and Freddie Johnson. Second Team, M.J. Flowers, Tamiskin Kejese, Alexander Kendall, Levert Jarman, and Sean Williamson. Honorable Mention, Isaiah Myers. Volleyball, Honorable Mention, Abby McNally, Tahia Pewett. And Boys Soccer, First Team, Alex McAfee. Second Team, Will Shuddy. Girls Soccer, Honorable Mention, Alex Menking. So congratulations to all the Corrine Cardinal athletes. Now for the All-Stars, All-City Recognition for our Northwest Knights. Division III Defensive Player of the Year nomination, Diego Neri. Division III First Team nomination, Kevin Grant and Diego Neri. Third Team, I'm sorry, Division III Second Team nomination, Jaheim Cherry, Nick Moore, and Isaiah Benson. So again, I'd like to congratulate all of these athletes. Great job.
Congratulations. Hey, Jim, any Butler Tech updates?
Yeah, just one thing. I wanted to notice Anna Gaynor. She was recommended for the Presidential Scholar nominee. There's five kids from each state that get nominated. And the U.S. Department of Education will pick 20 students to be selected for the nationwide national honors. And I just wanted to read a little blurb here that we've got that Anna was nominated by Peter Clark, Instructor of the Financial Services Honors at Butler Tech's Northwest High School Career Tech Location. Clark shared that Anna Lou is one of the strongest students he has ever taught, and her involvement in the school and community made her an excellent candidate for the nomination. Anna Lou currently leads Business Professionals of America Ohio Association as the president. Her second year as state officer. And our local BPA chapter as its vice president, shared Clark. She earned the Ambassador Touch Award from BPA and has attended national leadership conferences for both BPA and DECA. Anna Lou is an active member of the women's volleyball team, academic quiz team outside of a school. Anna Lou co-ops at the Cincinnati Police Federal Credit Union as a teller and interns at the Corrine Chamber of Commerce focusing on social media promotion. Anna Lou is a natural leader, and the level of energy and passion that she shows is exceptional. She has come to embody the best our school and our organizations in which she is involved. And the word Anna Lou is amazing. So I just wanted to congratulate her, and I'll follow up when we get to the finale.
Is that good?
Can I get a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I had the opportunity of working the polls with her mother, and it just happened to be the day when she was up in Columbus and they were running for office, and somebody sent her the video of Anna Lou and her presentation, and it just gave me goosebumps. I honestly felt like I was watching a TED Talks. She is dynamic. So I just wanted to share because it was so cool to see her. And then when we found out that, you know, she was elected as president and just wish her the best of luck that she gets one of these national honors would be awesome. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Pam.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's all. Okay, Todd, are there any reports from any employee organizations?
We have received none.
Okay. Any community comments submitted?
Yeah, we did not receive any community comments.
Okay. And then that moves us to 11.1, the adoption of the superintendent's consent items.
Yes, for the adoption of the superintendent consent items, you will find personnel items that are resignations and requirements from regular teaching positions and classified positions to extra-duty coaching positions. General business is vendor contracts. It is Title I services that we are required to provide for appropriate schools that we're all budgeted for and as part of the requirement of how we disperse Title I funds, not only to our schools but also for others. Donations for the Northwest Local School District, there is a variety of schools and staff bearing from a couple teachers receiving an iPad. The books to schools, supporting our schools monetarily for programs like positive behavior intervention support. So a lot of donations there. There are also two other items, curriculum and instruction. At the high school program of study, it was presented as information at our last meeting, and the newcomer English course, which was information at our last meeting. So the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the superintendent consent items as listed.
Summit.
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, just under the retirements for the employees, I just want to congratulate Ron Russo for his retirement coming up in May, and Jill Clevinger. Just wanted to congratulate both of them for their service in their years in our district.
The consent items passed 5 to 0. Next is Amy Wells, treasurer, consent items.
Good evening. For the fiscal consent items tonight, we have the regular meeting minutes from December 7, our special meeting minutes from December 14 that I asked the board to dispense with reading of and prove. Our financial report for the month of November had all funds balanced of $51.8 million. Our general fund unreserved balance was $33.6 million. Our revenue year-to-date is $44.7 million, or 48% of our estimated for the year, and our expenditures are $38 million, or 39% of our estimate for the year. Our investment weighted average of return is 0.69%. And while this is low and a lot lower than we were over a year ago, we are still trending a little higher than the benchmarks. So we are trying to achieve as much investment return as we possibly can at this time. The list of monthly bills are routine monthly bills, as well as we had our debt principal and interest payments. We purchased some buses and related radios. We had our high school redesigned furniture that we purchased, Microsoft licenses, our Corrine High School football uniforms, the fiscal year '20 audit, some student software, and we continue to have pandemic supplies that are ongoing as well as auxiliary and grant fund payments. And then finally, we have a then-and-now invoice that came in over $3,000 for tuition payments. payment. So with that, I'd like to ask the board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
Summate. Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any questions or comments? That passed five to zero. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Mr. Yader?
An additional personnel item is the hiring of a volunteer coach. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel item as listed.
So moved?
Second.
That passes five to zero. Thank you, Daryl. And that takes us to superintendent updates.
Okay, the first thing I would like to give you an update on is going to be presented by Heidi Stickney. She is going to talk about an extra help program that we're going to try to get started here in the second semester and what the possibilities and what planning we're going through. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Heidi.
Hi, Heidi.
Evening. Thank you for the time this evening. I do want to let you know that we are being at our some opportunities for families who are working during the day have access to our teaching staff in the evening, and we thought this would be a great opportunity for those kids who maybe are struggling in a particular area, maybe need extra few minutes with the teacher to have the opportunity to meet with them virtually in the evening. So we are proposing to create a virtual after-hours student support program that will be two days a week from six to eight to start second semester. And we are in the process right now of creating teachers' fellow spots. So the process for that will be that families will be and students will be able to select a 20-minute time slot during those evenings to be able to have direct access to new teachers. We are targeting preschool through 12th grade and including both intervention specialists to support our students' abilities, as well as content teachers for students with some of those content areas that are very specific. So I would not be able to teach chemistry by any stretch of the imagination, but our chemistry teacher will be. So we are looking to provide the opportunity for families in a way that gives them additional access in the evening, and the cost for the program will be covered by the CARES Act grant received. Any questions?
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. All right, the next topic I would like to talk about is the new guidelines that were put out by the CDC and the Hamilton County Health Department, and then some new guidance that was given out by our governor. So on a weekly basis, just so folks know, I mean, with local superintendents in Hamilton County, actually all of them, and Greg Kesterman, who is the Hamilton County Health Commissioner, the entire purpose of our Friday morning meetings is to have COVID discussions, discuss how it's affecting schools, our communities, and then have questions and decisions about any COVID-related issues that are discussed. So it's a great way to brainstorm. It's a great way to get clarification from our Hamilton County Health Commissioner, who makes the primary decisions on anything that we are allowed to go forward with in terms of what's good for our staff and our students. So prior to Christmas, CDC guidelines changed the amount of quarantine days from 14 to 10 days. As a district, we continue to monitor this. This change was mostly to help those folks in the workforce. So what they found out is a lot of people were not getting tested because they didn't want to be quarantined from work for 14 days. So they hoped by reducing the amount of days to 10, that more people would be apt to get tests, and then we could find out who had it, make sure that they're not spreading it, so on and so forth. And it also would also help kids get back into school sooner. So that was an underlying theme of it also. So as a district, we continue to not quarantine a lot of people in our in-person learning model. So as you look at how this guideline and who this guideline helps, it really helps those districts who are quarantining 15 to 20 over one or two classrooms because they're changing bells and they have non-cohorting models. In a cohorting model, you're with the same person all day long, easier to track who you're with, you're not changing, you don't have as many opportunities to spread the disease. What's more important is it also helps our teachers in a cohorting model. They don't have as much access to a large amount of students like these other school districts do, and therefore, we have little or few quarantines that we have had occurring. In our typical classroom, if we get someone who tests positive with COVID, we were quarantining one or two people. Like I said, in other districts where they're not cohorting, it was 15 to 20. So we asked Greg, what do you think about this? He goes, well, we will abide by it because we want people to get tested, and our hope is if people are going to lower their quarantine days, that they monitor even more. So it puts more emphasis on the person who has reduced quarantines. But he stated repeatedly that the 14-day quarantine is still the gold standard, and it is still something that is safest for our students and is safe for our staff. And as we said at the December Board of Ed meeting, we are looking at these guidelines and the possibility of offering a choice to parents of a student who is quarantined either 10 or 14 days. Some parents have raised concerns that if the kids are home, it's not good for their mental health, we need them back in school, we would like to see the day shortened. Well, so would we. We don't want to do anything to harm a kid's mental health. So we are looking at the option for the parents to do 14 or 10. We still have the opposite going on, where other parents are not wanting us to follow this guideline and who are very expressive about, hey, they need to be out 14 days or otherwise, how are we going to know who has it and who's clear of it? So it kind of goes both ways. There's a no-win situation, kind of. The other thing is, this doesn't apply to extracurricular activities. So if you're in band, if you're in chorus, if you're in any sport, you're quarantined for 14 days. 10 days is not an option. So for extracurriculars, 14 is what it is. So if your son or daughter plays a sport or is in a band competition and is a close contact, it's a 14-day quarantine, not a 10. The other thing, the latest change that has been the guidance from the governor states that if you are sitting in class next to a student who has been identified positive by COVID, so whether you're one feet, two feet, three feet, four feet, or six feet away, and you have a mask on, the new guidance says you do not have to be quarantined. This change came as a result of districts who are not using the cohorting model, having a large number of students who are being quarantined daily. There is research out there that is against this from the medical fields at certain universities, and there are research out there that is in favor of this. Right now, it's kind of on the fence going both ways. I think the governor is under a lot of pressure for these school districts who have not yet started in-person learning, and this is a way to help. At Northwest, we didn't have this problem. We're not quarantining a lot of people, is again what I want to reiterate. When someone tests positive, it's usually the person to the right or left, and in some classrooms, we had the six-feet spacing, so it's not even that. But we don't have that in every classroom, and we've said that from the beginning, and some it's three, four, five feet. So we certainly understand the importance of keeping students and staff in school. Will this help our teachers now that their kids aren't quarantined as long? Will they be able to come to school and work? Yes, it will. So that is advantageous for us. However, since day one, safety has guided everything we do and will continue to guide us as we continue to see large amounts of cases in our community. We are considering phasing any of these changes once community spread stabilizes a bit. We will look at implementing the new guidance at different levels and sampling sizes. We will look at starting at our two high schools. Because part of this is, the most important piece of this is, so if I test positive and then Jim and Amy are going to be not quarantined, then they have to self-monitor and really pay attention to what's going on to themselves for the next 10 to 14 days. Do I have a fever? Do I have a headache? Do I have any problem with taste or smell? Lots of things you've got to do, and we think high school would be the best place to do that. We also are going to track the data on who goes out and quarantined because of a close contact and then look at what it brings back to us. So are they really testing positive or not? So we will look at this and then be bringing it down to another level as we go on, probably middle school next and then elementary after that. But we're going to start with the high school after talking to Kiva, Daryl, and the team, and start there, see what it brings to us. But again, it comes with caution, and Greg has said this every Friday, and he continues to say, I know what the governor is saying, but I still tell you, you need six-feet spacing, and you need to quarantine for 14 days. And he will tell you that to your face. And even goes, if you want to tell parents it's my fault, no, we don't want to do that. We want to know what's the best safety procedures for our kids. Do we want our kids in school? Yes, we do. But we also have to make sure that if they are not quarantined, are the parents, especially of elementary kids and middle school kids, aware of everything they should be looking for on a daily basis as they get up? Can they even possibly do temperature checks at home? So like I said, we'll start with the high school, see how that goes, and then basically bring it down from there. So any questions about that aspect of what he said?
Are we providing any kind of education that goes home with the kids or electronically to the parents that talks about self-check, things like that, things that they may or may not know?
It's all, yeah.
There's so many vectors of information, you know, are we focusing to try to have them see what we're working off of?
And Daryl, feel free to chime in if I forget something, but Hamilton County is changing their letter, especially for those places that are going to the, if you're next to them and wearing a mask, you don't have to. There'll be very specific guidelines contained in that. We will still notify the whole school, we have a positive case, and then anybody who has a close contact in our mind will get a letter to say, watch for these things for the remainder of the time, so.
And we've been pushing out to students and the staff all the protocols for self-monitoring, what that looks like. We have a red, yellow, green chart that really says, if you're in the green column, this is what you should be doing. If you have possibly been exposed, this is the yellow column, you should be doing this. So we've tried to push out multiple documents multiple times that would guide people in their decision-making about whether or not they should be at school or not.
I also know Kiva Bryce, our district nurse, is online, so Kiva, feel free to chime in if there's something you want to add that I have not mentioned.
I've got a question. How are we handling with transportation? You know, say we've got kids that have to, you know, quarantine, and they rode the bus. Are we then as that bus driver?
The new guidance is the classroom and the bus are the same thing. So if there's three little kindergartners in a seat and one in the middle tests positive, right now, these two don't have to quarantine. What we've been doing with buses, though, is if you're to the right or left and you're within six feet, we've been quarantining them. So once their quarantine is over, then they can come back to school. Because buses are the closest.
And what about the driver?
The drivers have a mask on. We've been running the best we can to get our routes covered. We have a lot out each day, but, and some of our drivers are working two jobs, so it's...
Is there a barrier for the driver?
There is not. You cannot have that barrier and be safe driving and do everything you need to do.
And how are this, how is the census of the staff at this point like? I mean, I was thinking the other day, like, we've been through, I'll say, the first wave with school, and now we're coming into this post-holiday wave. Are they feeling a little bit more safe? Are they feeling more comfortable?
I don't know if it's a safer feel, or I know that when we came back from Thanksgiving, that week off helped tremendously, a lot of positive cases. We had the same exact thing last week. Now, they have lowered this Monday, but they're still, to a high extent, we're watching our schools to see how they're going. They're refreshed now, so it's not as anxious of a time, but they were very clear with their survey and comments that they like the cohorting model, they want to do what's best for kids, but they also want the kids to be safe, and they want to be safe. So as we roll this out to them tomorrow and talk about what I talk about tonight, because we wanted to put it in front of the board tonight, and we've already talked to our building principals and our supervisors, but we wanted to talk to you guys about where we are and then roll this out to our staff, and we'll get their feedback from that as we go. We're still trying to wait for something official to come out, per se. It's not going to be an order. It looks like it's just going to be a guidance, but Daryl and I have looked at a number of things, and everybody's interpretation of the guidance is different. So I have an email to Greg Kesterman today in Hamilton County Educational Service Center, and I'm still waiting because things are still changing on how this guidance looks. So we don't have the exact answer. So we don't want to miff the staff with this is what it'll look like until we know the facts. But, you know, in the cohorting, this, it doesn't really affect us. We were doing right and left only, and that was it, because we have cohorting, we have our spacing, where others are doing, they could end up with 300 in one school or 400 because of the model they're using. So the other thing the governor has been all over the news about is talking about the return of all students to school as of March 1st. I just want to remind everybody that he's not really talking about those of us who are in-person learning. He's talking about there's a lot of schools that have yet to allow in-person learning. He is referring to these school districts who are not allowing in-person and wanting them to get a way to get back into school. And he's talking about the vaccine and the vaccination maybe being that gateway. As you know, Northwest Local School District has offered in-person learning since day one. He stated that the vaccines would be delivered to some schools starting middle of January. That is now not the reality of the situation. We are not hearing the possibility of vaccinations for staff until mid or beginning of February. It's just because not enough is being released, is what Greg's telling us. So they'll get them out as fast as they get them, they just can't get them. The vaccines will be for staff only. I want everybody to be clear that the vaccines are not planned for students at this time. If students get the vaccine and win, it'll be at the end of 2021, most likely December or even next January in 2022. If the vaccines do arrive by mid-February to late February, there are lots of factors that have to be looked at. One, the vaccines are not mandatory. So how many of our staff will actually want to get the vaccine? Just to remind folks that only about 40% of the folks in the U.S. get flu shots, and that currently, only 49% of the people who are being offered the vaccine for COVID are actually taking it. So not everybody is even agreeing to take it. They have fears, they have concerns, they want to see what it looks like, who, how it affects them. It's kind of a wait-and-see method is kind of what they're doing. So with that being said, in order for the vaccine to work, you have to have a second shot, and that's 28 days later. And then there's a 10-day window after that before you're fully vaccinated. So that puts us in the middle or the end of April, and we're nowhere near 100% of our staff vaccinated. So it's not a cure-all. It's a great thing that the vaccinations are out there, but the assumption that everyone will take it, and when you look at who they're giving it to, the medical professionals in tier one and those who are working in the retirement homes, not everybody there is even taking them. You're not even at 50%. So we will survey our staff to see if they want the shot. We cannot ask why, we cannot go there, but we need a count for Hamilton County, and then once Hamilton County gets the shots rolling in, or the vaccinations rolling in, then we will definitely get them out. So getting vaccinations does not change a lot of what we have in place for in-person learning. Again, not all will be vaccinated, and we continue to do our best to make sure masks are worn, and we keep the spacing at four, five, and six feet. When we started the school year, parents were given a choice for in-person remote learning. We stated we would reevaluate at the end of the first semester to see what we could do. Well, there's big changes since August and September. We were at 1,200, 1,500 cases a day. I think today was 78, 28, something like that. So we're anywhere from 6,000 to 10,000 cases a day in Ohio. So that's way up from what it was in August and September. We currently are at our max capacity, and our elementary and middle schools with spacing, keeping it at four, five, and six feet. We also have roughly 35% of our students remote learning, and they chose this from the beginning of the year. So when that occurred, we had to divide our staff up. And our in-person learning versus our remote learning, they're at different stages in their curriculum and where they are. So there's not no magic button we can push and just have people switch and bring people back. It's just not possible. We will continue to work on our in-person remote learning, meet all the needs of students, their parents, and their families, as much as we can change. In the last five months, the spread of COVID has not changed. In fact, it's become worse, is what I don't want people to forget. So when you get mask-weary, and you get tired of wearing it, and you don't want to, it's still really out there, and it's even stronger than it was before. We do not have the ability to move our staff at our schools, so we need to meet the needs of all our students in both settings. Obviously, an IEP student, the IEP team may request a change. We have to do that according to law. That's one of the accommodations. This, however, continues to be tough as it involves moving special education staff while making sure to meet the needs of all our students. So it's not a staff not wanting to, it's not a parent's not wanting to, it's just a combination of things that makes it very difficult to move. I mean, you will see some empty classrooms in some schools, but those teachers who used to be in those classrooms are providing remote learning for the 35% that's out there for our district. And to just move them back and forth, we can't just say, oh, remote learners, you're on your own, we need those people back in school. That's unfortunately just not the way it works. We will continue to look at this. We will continue to look at this, evaluate this. But going back to our discussion in December, what our staff wanted, what they felt safe with, and not seeing the vaccina, I mean, really, when we ended school last April or May, we were hoping for vaccination by October and November. It just didn't work out that way. Now, I'm tickled that we're still going to get it in middle of February or March even, but we still have to do what we have to do to maintain staff safety, student safety, and make sure our kids can continue to go to school. Are the mask-wearing, it's going to become more of an issue, not because kids are defiant, people are just getting tired of wearing them. They just, they're tired of it. They just want to see each other, they want to smile, they want to socialize, they want to talk. But now more than ever, we've got to make sure they keep the mask on. We've got to make sure adults in our schools are the role models for them doing that. So we will continue to push that. Our principals, however, have been able to make a few adjustments at their buildings, but they're very limited on what, who can come back and when, depending on space and staffing. We have a couple of schools who had maybe two openings to come back. I mean, our older schools are just tight, they're close. You don't have much classroom size. Several factors come into play when you think about, can you make changes for fourth quarter or whenever, which doesn't look likely? Is staffing is not available, who do you take it from? Do you take it from in-person and give it to remote? Or do you take it from remote to give to in-person? That's not fair to either set of kids. So it's that consistency. Students are not the same place academically. Some schools have classrooms, but like I said, not enough staff to cover. Transportation, they're, I mean, they're doing it with miracles in my mind. They're getting new routes every day, they're picking up kids, they're going back to get kids. And it's with staff that, their staff gets sick too and they get quarantined just like everybody else. So all these things tie into it, but that's where we are. I know the Governor's excited and you know, we're all excited, but sometimes he says things that puts a lot of pressure on different districts where it's just not reality. We've been in-person, but it doesn't change everything come March 1st. Come March 1st, I don't, Greg Kesterman didn't see over 10% of schools having the vaccine and that was only stage one. So remember, it's a two-step process, 28 days later, you get the second step. So it's just going to take a while. It's not the administering piece, it's more of the supply piece. So the sooner we can get more supplies, the sooner we can get it out.
Todd, do you know, is there already a plan in place how the vaccines will get administered? Will it be in the building and?
Greg is sending out questionnaires to Kiva and Darryl and myself. So he's wanting to know, do we have the district nurses to provide the service to do it? But the other piece that's really complicated is delivering it, keeping it at a certain temperature and keeping it stored. So there are some school districts and some, like Hamilton County, Butler County are working together. Got some ideas on how you can do things. So we'll continue to work with them. Greg said worst-case scenario is you'll get a voucher, you'll take it to Walgreens or CVS and that's where you'll get your shot. But the key there is we've got to remind folks that we've got to get back in that 28-day window or this values everything you've done. But we can manipulate it and make it work here in our schools. When this starts happening, though, I just want everybody to understand, it'll be a work in progress because you get the vaccination, then you're under watch for 15 minutes. So it just doesn't happen and then you go. So we'll have to develop some systems that allow school by school, staff by staff, to make sure we can do some things. So there might some be a remote learning associated with that school until we get the staff vaccinated, but we can do it all in one day. But I'm just saying, there might have to be some changes as we move forward. We will look at what everybody else is doing and whoever has the best method, we will definitely share and work with them and get it out the best we can.
In my, my work, we're getting ready to get back the vaccination and so I separated my team in half because I'm afraid that, like if everybody has symptoms post-inject, you know, then the next thing you know, we're not able to provide the service that we provide. So there's a lot of things that you have to, have to think about. Todd, the other thing that I've been thinking about is, like this is obviously dramatically impacted education. I mean dramatically. So, you know, like my daughter is at the high school and she's, she's thrived through this. I mean, she's very, very accountable to herself and from everything that we see, she's up on all of her. But there's going to be some that fall behind clearly. And we've talked a little bit about this, like, and I know that some of this is, is just going to be maybe predictive at best. But let's say this stuff all goes away next year and we're left, we're going to be left with a scattered range of kids that may not, they may not fall. Like if they're going from second to third, they may not be ready for third. Like, we don't know. I mean, I think there's a lot of unknowns. The other thing that I think about is like talking to some of the kids that are in like band and things like that. I'm worried about some of our, our other classes like that. If you take this thing off the vine, it's going to die. So, you know, what are we doing to try to get, like, even if it's to do modifications in how we do things in band or any of our other finer art stuff, are we trying to get some semblance of back to normal with all that? And what plan do we have, if we have a plan?
We have given the principals permission to look at different ways, to bring back plays, to bring back performances, but it has to be in a safe manner that meets the protocols. So they would put something together, present it to us, and then we would give approval for that. Kind of like the Gold Rain Craft Show. It was presented to us, we give approval, it goes back. We, we already have competition season going on for some. Nightlight show cards are starting to get to the point where they can compete. Drum line and stuff like that. Athletic contests are obviously going on. So we're not saying no to anything extracurricular-wise. As far as academically, we've just got to work with our staff. We've got to come up with good assessments because our kids are going to be behind next year. So we need an assessment that tells us where they are and then we have to work with our teachers to give them the supports to get the kids caught up to where they need to be. Because it's going to be a very broad picture and a large, and I think that's what's worrying our teachers the most. You know, we're going to come back next year and we're going to have these huge gaps in our classroom. Everybody is.
Yeah.
And so how do we give you the tools and the instructional strategies you need and the data so that you can assess these kids, find out where they are before they leave this year, and then assess again when they return, see where the gaps are, and then put strategies in place that will help close the gap and bring these kids back where they need to be. Colleges are doing the same thing. They already know there's going to be some learning gaps with these seniors who are going into college. We also know that that's going to be the same thing as they go from grade level to grade level.
I don't think we even remotely have an idea of how, that the overall true impact that this thing is going to have from here to the next five to 10 years.
And the equity piece is the shame of that. Because for some, they will, they will go on their own, they'll grow from it, they'll become even better because of it. But those who don't have the support at home that maybe others do, we got to make up for that. We got to find a way to help with that. And we can't put the extra stress on our teachers. We have to work with our teachers. We have to gather their input. What data do you need to work with them to get them where they need to be on reading level or on their math level? And then how do we work collaboratively as a district to get that to happen? And so Brenda is working with other districts. It's the hot topic for every district, not just ours. No matter where you are, Hamilton, Mason, Magota, Fintytown, Mount Humpy, all of them are talking about it. So they're all putting plans together and yes, he is leading that to see what assessments are going to be best to help drive that and get us where we need to be to start next year.
So our next meeting, can I get a report about, like, what are we doing with like our band, our, our other things, extracurricular? So that I can get an idea of how much we're moving that thing, that process forward with these various groups?
Yep.
I look at, I look at some of our bands now and our band is, if you go back one year to this year, there was, or I'll say last year, it's dwindling like as it is already. I worry about the longevity of that program because if we're not getting kids engaged when we have traditionally got them engaged, if we're engaging them later in their educational, academic careers, it may not take off as much, which is.
Right, and right now it's tough because some of these band teachers and music teachers are covering for other aspects. So it's even more difficult to recruit and get the kids involved. So how can we get them together and find out a way to get more kids involved? Because you're right, if you don't start in fifth and sixth grade like it was always determined, how do you ever develop the interest in that and continue to grow and build upon that as you get older?
I do hear my daughter playing her clarinet at 7:30 on a virtual meeting in her house.
That is on the, that is on the Michael Ronner program and the idea that when we come back to something normal, see the idea of rebuilding a program. And that's already been things that have been talked about with them about what does rebuilding look like? And the supportability because kids who haven't been able to be exposed on a continuous basis during the school day are, could lose that interest in how we regain that and rebuild it. And it'll be a process to rebuild. We're not getting that where we were looking. It'll probably slide back and we'll have to potentially rebuild.
It's just like, just like when we were talking about the levy and we were talking about cutting extracurriculars. A lot of the adhesive that keeps these kids engaged is, not that the band is extracurricular, but all these other things that kind of keep them engaged in, in school is already tough enough as we talk about the mental health of all this.
Band, chorus, show cards, all of it. If you'll check and monitor those kids' grades and their performances, they are high qualities and we got to keep that interest there.
Yeah.
Well, it's like you, you're going to have to go, these teachers are going to have to go and recruit these kids. You know, I mean, that's kind of what Butler Tech does to get somebody interested in your program. You know, you're going to go out and talk and try and get kids that, you know, freshmen, sophomores that are interested in whatever class you're teaching. You're going to have to go out and recruit these kids, which could be tough in fifth and sixth grade.
Sure.
You know, the one thing remote learning has done is it's really opened up what a high school can be as far as an open campus and things you can do. So where there wasn't time for certain activities to practice or get together more in the past, maybe there is more now. And then that's one aspect of it. We've still got to get to our middle schools and elementaries and promote that growth in that, in the kids. And the economy's not helping things either because you have to pay to rent those instruments to get playing. Our alumni do a fabulous job of donating instruments back to our schools, but it's still getting that piece in place also. So I'll definitely, we'll get with our arts department, get a presentation, get with Brenda Miller and we'll definitely have something for the February board meeting.
It'd be, it would be interesting, because I know a lot of it is spaces, like, because somebody, there's a lot of kids that do this. I mean, maybe we can engage our community like Soccer City or somebody who has a huge insight ability to, if there's a time, if they don't have anything going on, like right after school, we can engage them and get, gets there or maybe even have a concert there where you can get more people. I don't know. I mean, I just think we have to be out of the box to get things moving on, on some of these things.
That's all I have.
Good. Any questions or comments?
Yeah.
I had a question, I talked to you earlier, Todd, about the citizens address, how we used to have it when we were in person and everybody in the audience had the opportunity to ask a question about something during the meeting, at the end of the meeting. So we talked about that, I think in December, the possibility of having. So we have viewers right now that are on Facebook Live. We have viewers that are on Waitcross.TV, possibly viewers that are watching on, that have the Waitcross with the Cisai Bell Pyoptics and Spectrum. And about the possibility of them being able to email, I guess email you would be the person.
Well, two things happened during our meetings. So Lindsay is responding to people on Facebook Live. So there would have to be looking at something that we could control because one, we have to be able to prove that they live in the district and it is somebody. So that's the other tough part. Because when they are in person, they have to tell who they are, where they live and so on and so forth. And so we'd have to be careful of what's going on there. We'd have to look at our policy and a possible change there. And I'd have to get with Bill Deeters because he wrote our policy where that part would not be part of remote meetings, not knowing that if we'll stay in-person or remote as we go on. So I could do that research, find out what the best options are and get back to you guys for sure and, and see what we could do.
Something like Amy said, was it last April was when we suspended it? Yeah, right. So we just need to make a, make a change to that.
Yep.
Right.
And I think throughout logistics, because it's a virtual and we have a timeframe and a time limit, the logistics of how to, how they would ask, how they would verify, how they would answer.
I think that's the big thing is to verify, okay, I could sit here and say I'm so-and-so from Crest Road, but you know, how can, how can I do that?
I think we have to remember too, that was something, as far as I know, pretty unique to our district. I don't think that's something that most or a lot of boards even do that at the end. That was something that was added by a board member, I don't know, seven, eight, nine years ago, but.
I don't know any districts that do that.
Right, yeah, it seemed pretty unique, but it was something that we did when we were in person and we lost it as a result of the pandemic.
Right.
Well, actually in March, I mean, Mark actually read our new statement about public participation. We were actually phasing that out at that time. So March 1916, whatever that board meeting was, we had a statement.
We were phasing that piece out altogether.
We were going to pass that out with the cards at each meeting and then the meeting after that, we went virtual. So we started a process and then had to pivot and then had our attorney's resolution ask us to postpone public participation just because of the virtual dynamic.
Sure.
I think we need to just concentrate more on the community communications at the beginning of the meeting and figure that out.
Yeah, we put it on the website, we put it in bold print, we made it larger.
Get it out to every building, to put in their newsletters, to post it on our doors so we're not getting the comments to come in.
But I also, from talking to Lindsay, you have the most viewership that you've ever had as a Board of Education. It's not even close. It's 100 times better than it was before. So you're getting more participation is the way Lindsay puts it.
I did have one community member reach out to me via email and I talked to Amy about this and you talked, about the fiscal statement that came out via mail. And so their question slash concern was, was that a well, was that well-spent money? Why couldn't folks, if they wanted that information, turn to our website or? And I, and I wanted to bring that up just so that we could have it out to everybody who's watching. If you could share with me a little bit about what you shared and Todd, what you had shared with me about that money that was spent for that publication and why we needed to do it.
So last year, we did our first annual financial summary to our community. So it's to help us be transparent and accountable and show our community how we are spending our dollars. We receive about $50 million annually from our community and we spent about $8,000 that after the, the ad. We also sold an ad to help us pay for that distribution. So $8,000 to help show our community how we're spending the $50 million investment that they give us annually. And also, we do have it on the website. We did send it out through our communication channel. It's just the most of our community is not connected to our district. And so if they're not looking on our website for something because they're not connected to our district anyway, they don't have a grandchild, they don't have a child, they're either empty nester or they haven't had children yet, they may have just moved to the district. We also use those same forms for new enrollees and to realtors for people of money and looking to come to live in our community. So we're trying to reach all aspects of our community and make sure we get that information out to everyone. And as part of our strategic plan, one of our pillars is fiscal sustainability. And our committee, fiscal sustainability committee reviewed the annual paper last year and recommended that we do do that on an annual basis to help get the communication and education out to all of our communities.
I think tonight's a good night to bring it up because, look, we had, under the rebates, two or three different companies and the amount of money we've gotten from rebates that more than covered that $8,000.
Well, and plus Community Partners for Education, you know, we're paying $5,000 of it, so.
That's eight after the five, after the ad.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, that's kind of, you know.
Sure. You know, the other point to remember is 55,000-plus registered voters in our district, 8,800 students. If you're not a student in our district, you're probably not on our email. You probably don't find a whole lot of reason to visit our website. A lot of people vote for levies and a lot of people want to know that their tax dollars are being spent the correct way. So a very cheap and affordable way to get the money out, or the information out and using money that was, got through donated services.
Great, thank you so much.
Anything else?
Board member comments. Joe?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Well, I want to wish everybody a happy new year, to everyone in the district and all the students and personnel. Hopefully, the new year will be a lot healthier. Keep wearing those masks and social distance. Hopefully, we'll reach the new normal very soon. And the last thing I got to say is, go Buckeyes, beat Alabama.
Roll tide.
Yeah.
Delayed response there.
You brater.
Pam?
Gee, how do I follow that?
Yeah.
I just want to thank Lindsay for the wonderful gifts, for the, especially for the presentation. I can only imagine how our staff and our students, whether they're remote or whether they're in school, there is some, I mean, I know even as a board member, I mean, I feel, I feel a little detached, because I miss seeing the kids. And to be able to see that video, and to see that those kids, you know, just to hear